The regular meeting of Bussaras City Council for March the 20th, 2018 is called to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
McKeever.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Wireball.
Here.
Trucca.
Here.
Sack.
Here.
Foote.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Before you, you have the minutes for the March 6, 2018 regular meeting. I need a motion to accept these minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wireball is second by Mr. McKeever to accept the March 6, 2018 regular meeting minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. This is where we grant permission for visitors to speak to council. If anyone would like to address council this evening, please go to the podium. Anyone this evening?
Okay, I'm just fine.
None? Communications and petitions.
We have three letters here. The first one is from the Bussaras Lodge Number 68 Paternal Order of Police here in Bussaras dated March 13, addressed to the Bussaras City Council, and the subject is the Cruisin' with the Cops Customing Classic Car Show. The Bussaras Lodge Number 68 Paternal Order of Police Incorporated respectfully requests permission to close the following streets on Saturday, June 9, 2018, for the Cruisin' with the Cops Customing Classic Car Show. We would like to close the 100 block of East Warren Street from 7:00 a.m. until 12:00 a.m., midnight, for the food court. Sandusky Avenue from Mary Street to Oakwood Avenue from 12:00 p.m. until 12:00 a.m., midnight. We would also like to close Washington Square, 100 blocks of East and West Mansfield Street, 100 block of West Warren Street, 100 blocks of East and West Rensselaer Street, and the 100 block of East and West Charles Street from 12:00 p.m. until 12:00 a.m., midnight. Your attention and support of this matter would be greatly appreciated as this is a great event for our city. Respectfully, Tracy Keegan, Treasurer, FOP Lodge Number 68. And that has to be referred to the Health and Safety Committee.
Okay, I need a motion to refer the Cruisin' with the Cops Customing Classic Car Show for June 9th in the street closings to Health and Safety Committee. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed.
We also have a letter here addressed to the Bussaras City Council dated March 15 regarding items approved by the Plating Commission for council's review and approval. This is from the City Plating Commission. Dear Council President, the Bussaras City Plating Commission met on Monday, February 12, 8, 2018, in order to review a zoning amendment application submitted by Mr. Wes Howe, owner of 902 Whitestone, also 904, 906, and A through C, 902 Whitestone Street. Mr. Howe's property fell into discontinuance after being vacant for longer than the two years, causing it to lose its grandfathering in the urban neighborhood residential zoning district, or R3. In order to return the property to a usable state in the district, the application was seeking to allow apartment housing in the R3 district. Zoning Administrator John Rostache felt the application was an opportunity to address this idea to create a conditional use, allowing for multifamily housing in the R3 district. Mr. Rostache presented the reasons he felt such a use would be beneficial to said zoning district and the city as a whole, including to provide for the revitalization and restoration of vital departments that had fallen into discontinuance within the R3 district, to encourage development of housing near the downtown business district, thereby supporting the local economy, to encourage private reinvestment and revitalization that offers a diversity of housing choices, as is the purpose of the R3 district, and to accommodate the changing market trends. Those trends are driven by the economic demographic of the millennial generation and their housing expectations. The Plating Commission recommends the following minimum conditions be included to the proposed amendment to Section 116, 3.04 of the Bussaras Codified Ordinance, allowing multifamily housing in the urban neighborhood residential zoning district, or R3. Establishment of a Build Two front property line. This line would be the average front property line of homes located on the block containing the proposed development. Consistent height requirement. The required height would be no greater than plus or minus 25 percent of the average height of homes located on the block containing the proposed development. Side yard requirement. The side yard requirement should be similar to that of a common wall, two-family home of six feet. And off-street parking. In areas where there is no off-street parking, two off-street parking spaces shall be provided for each unit. In areas of the R3 district where off-street parking is provided, the parking requirements shall be reduced according to the following table. Two, number of units, two. The number of required spaces would be three. Three units would be four required spaces. Four would be six. Five would be eight. Six would be nine. And more than six, number of units, would be 75 percent of the off-street required amount up to the nearest whole number. In the case where an existing structure is to be modified to accommodate multifamily housing, the applicant shall submit engineered drawings stamped by a professional engineer or architect. The plans shall clearly indicate fire protection between the units with a minimum of two-hour fire-resistant rating. Sincerely, Landon Hill, Plating Commission Secretary. And this has to be referred to the Plating Committee.
Okay, this, well, we'll start a process. In order to make the zoning change, we have a certain process we have to go through, but it needs to come back to our Plating Committee first. So do I have a motion to send this item from the Plating Commission to the Plating Committee?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I know, but it was first.
I wasn't.
Kevin. Motion by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. Trucca, to send the change for R3 district to the Plating Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. Thank you.
And the last communication is from Wavelength Communications. This is addressed to Bussaras City Council dated March 19, 2018. Dear Bussaras Council, I would like to ask that council please consider changing their zoning laws to allow towers as a conditional use in the commercial zoning districts of general business and general industry, and also remove the required clearance of 100 percent free fall radius around towers. Example of why a tower shouldn't need the 100 percent fall radius clearance around it is the Verizon Tower behind City Hall. The current zoning law pertaining to towers is antiquated and outdated in some of the wording dates back to when the AM radio towers were the only form of radio communication. In today's ever-evolving technological world, these changes to the current zoning laws pertaining to towers should help keep Bussaras up with the times in the wireless world we now live in. Thank you, Kurt Fankhauser, owner, Wavelength Communications. And this has to be referred also to the Plating Committee.
Okay, this will start a process then. Here for another amendment to our zoning. So I need a motion, put this into the Plating Committee?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Trucca, to put this to the Plating Committee about towers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. Thank you. Moving on to our standing committee reports. Mr. Myers, you need to get started with this.
Bussaras City Council, regular committees met on Thursday, March 8, 2018, 6:06 PM to 7:27 PM. Members Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Bruce Trucca, Monica Sack, Doug Foote, Andrew Shaw. Members present, Mark McKeever, Dan Wireball, Bruce Trucca, Monica Sack, Doug Foote, Andrew Shaw. Item number one was the Bussaras City Joint Regular Committees called to order by McKeever at 6:06 PM. Number two, public participation was none. Number three, the order of committee business. We start with the Health and Safety Committee at 6:06 PM. Members present, Bruce Trucca, Andrew Shaw, and Mark McKeever, acting chair. Item one, mutually fire agreement with Liberty Township. Safety Service Director Jeff Wagner said Liberty Township has asked to enter into a five-year mutually agreement with the city for fire protection. Law Director Rob Ratliff said the practice now is for the Bussaras Fire Department to respond to fires outside city limits when it's requested. Shaw made a motion to request legislation for the city to enter into a five-year mutually agreement with Liberty Township for fire protection, with a second by Trucca. Motion passed by voice vote. Item two, weeds and grasses. Ratliff presented suggested changes to Chapter 522.02 of the city's codified ordinances, which pertain to the required cutting of weeds and grasses. The changes would require only one notice that a property owner is in violation of the ordinance under 522.02 paragraph B. Under 522.02 paragraph F, a second violation would be considered a fourth-degree misdemeanor, punishable by 30 days in jail and up to a $250 fine, while a third and subsequent violations would be a third-degree misdemeanor, punishable by up to 60 days in jail and up to a $500 fine. Bill Stoker, 205 Moore Spring Street, asked if city could contract out the mowing of the derelict properties. Wagner said that could conflict with some AFSC ME contract, although it could be pursued if the mowing goes beyond the city's ability to keep up with it. Trucca suggested milkweed be removed from 522.02A1, given that the plant is considered beneficial for monarch butterflies. Trucca made a motion to the changes to Chapter 522.02, suggested by the law director, along with the removal of milkweed from 522.02A1, with a second by Shaw. Motion passed by voice vote. Item three, garbage and rubbish. Ratliff presented suggested changes to Chapter 931.02 of the city's codified ordinances pertaining to waste collection provisions and Chapter 931.99 pertaining to the penalty for violating those provisions. Added to 931.02F would be 931.02F2 detailing large items that could be collected by the city in properly wrapped in bags, as well detailing the violation should these items be placed at the curb without city approval. The penalty provision in 931.99 would be changed to stepping up misdemeanor classifications for subsequent offenses. The matter was tabled until the law director makes change, suggests changes to the language in the chapters, and an updated list of disposal costs is provided. Item four, McKeever reassessed the Health and Safety Committee at 6:53 PM.
Any questions regarding the minutes from the Health and Safety Committee? None? Okay, moving on. Finance Committee, the SAC.
Finance Committee met Thursday, March 8, 2018, at 6:53 PM to 7:03 PM. Members present, Dan Wireball, Kevin Myers, Andrew Shaw, and myself, Chair. Number one, new line item in 705 Waterworks Replacement. Otter Joy Schiffer said legislation is needed to create the category 7525 Waterworks Distribution and Object 23 Contractual Services within Fund 705 Waterworks Replacement for appropriations concerning water line expansion outside city limits. Service Safety Director Jeff Wagner explained that the $66,000 appropriated for expansion on February 20th was to allow the engineering firm to get started on the project, but that more funds will be required as it proceeds. Shaw made a motion requesting legislation to create the above category and object line in the budget with a second by Wireball. Motion passed by voice vote. Number two, various appropriations. Otter Joy Schiffer reported that the following appropriations needed to be made. A, from unappropriated Fund 701 Waterworks Filtration Materials and Supplies Funds, $2,500 for repairs to the filtration vehicle. B, from unappropriated Fund 705 Waterworks Replacement, Waterworks Distribution, Contractual Services Funds, $100,000 for initial engineering and any additional planning needed for water line expansion. C, from unappropriated Fund 820 Derelict Building Liability Fire Department Other Uses Funds, $17,010.50 for an insurance check received for the fire loss at 922 Reed Street to be held by the city until the property is deemed safe, at which time it will revert to the property owner. Wireball made a motion to request legislation making appropriations would be seconded by Shaw. Motion passed by voice vote. Number three, lifeguards and employee manpower. Wagner explained that three changes to Section 2F of the existing employee manpower ordinance are being sought. The number of head lifeguard, assistant manager positions would be changed from one to two. The number of lifeguards would be changed from eight to seven. The number of substitute lifeguards would be changed from six to four, with two concession workers added. He noted that the city annually struggles to staff these positions and that the changes would not require any additional funds. Shaw made a motion to request legislation making the proposed changes to employee manpower would be seconded by Wireball. Motion passed by voice vote. Number four, we set up the Plating Committee at 7:03 PM.
Thank you. Any questions or comments about the minutes?
No.
Mr. Myers?
I was not present for the minutes, so that should be.
Yes, I just have one small correction in paragraph one where it states that sort of Safety Director Jeff Wagner explained that the $66,000 appropriated for expansion on February 20th, that should just be approved. Because we were talking about approving the engineering at the February 20 meeting. We're actually appropriating funds tonight.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, I need first a motion to make these two changes to, Mark, Mr. Myers is being absent, and to change in the first item, the word appropriated to approve. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Shaw, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wireball. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to public lands and buildings. Mr. Wireball?
Bussaras City Council, the Public Lands and Buildings Committee met from 7:03 to 7:09 PM on March 28, 2018. Members present, Bruce Trucca, Doug Foote, Mark McKeever, and myself. First up was tower space contracts, the city's ten-year contract with Wavelength. Communications expires in April. A new draft agreement has been drawn up by the law director, Kurt Fankhauser. 1675 South Sandusky Avenue distributed a copy of the agreement with his suggested revisions. Committee members request time to review the suggested revisions, and a special committee meeting was scheduled for 5:45 PM on Tuesday, March 13. The law director will evaluate the suggested revisions in drafting a final agreement, which council will review. Wireball recessed, the Public Lands and Buildings Committee at 7:09 PM.
Any questions or comments regarding the meeting? None? Thank you very much, Mr. Wireball. Would you like to finish us out, please?
Oh, yeah. Brother participation, Kurt Fankhauser, 1675 South Sandusky Avenue asks if a conditional use could be requested for the downtown business district if his business, Wavelength Communications, wishes to erect a communications tower there. Council President Sislove said the request could be referred to the appropriate committee at the next council meeting. Five, law director Rod Ratliff requested an executive session of city council to consider the purchase of real property and personal property, whether it is tangible or intangible, or to consider the sale of real property by competitive bid, ORC Section 121 dot 22G2. SAC made a motion that at this time council adjourns into executive session with all available elected officers of the Bussaras City Administration and Service Safety Director, if available, to consider the purchase of real property and personal property, whether it is tangible or intangible, or to consider the sale of real or personal property by competitive bid, ORC Section 121 dot 22G2. Council President Love repeated the motion verbatim and asked for a second to the motion. McKeever seconded the motion. Roll call, vote. SAC, yes. McKeever, yes. Yay. Wireball, yay. Trucca, yay. Foote, yay. Shaw, yay. Nay, snn. Motion carried. Love announced that council adjourned the executive session at 7:12 PM. Foote made a motion to adjourn the executive session, followed with a second by McKeever. Roll call, vote. Foote, yay. McKeever, yay. Wireball, yay. Trucca, yay. SAC, yay. Shaw, yay. Nay, snn. Motion carried. Love announced that council adjourned executive session at 7:26 PM. There was no report. Wireball asked for a motion to adjourn the joint regular committees. Motion by McKeever and second by Shaw to adjourn, adjourn at 7:27 PM.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, the Service Committee met in special session on March 13, 2018, at 4:00 PM. Mr. Trucca?
Members present were Dan Wireball, Doug Foote, Andrew Shaw, and myself. Number one, the Special Service Committee meeting was called by committee members Dan Wireball, Doug Foote, Andrew Shaw, and myself to discuss water line expansion. The meeting was called to order by Trucca at 4:00 PM. Water line expansion. Law Director Rob Ratliff explained that the city currently provides water to Crawford County, which in turn distributes it to much of the county. The city is scheduled to take control of those water lines at the end of the county's debt service in 2019. The county is proposing that the city take over the lines now, with the county providing the funds to service the remaining debt, as well as the sewer lines. The countywide sewer and water district was created in 1975, and by taking over the district, the city would gain exclusive rights to supply the county with water, blocking any competitors, or the city could negotiate with competitors over who is the supply and area, along with any compensation for doing so. There would be no cost to the city on assuming control of the district. Beyond the cost of expansion, beyond the... Foote made a motion to request legislation for the city to accept the assignment of legal rights of the county water and sewer district, with a second by Wireball. Motion passed by voice vote. Foote made a motion to request legislation authorizing the city to enter into agreement with the county for a transfer of the county water and sewer district to the city, with a second by Shaw. Motion passed by voice vote. Also in regard to water line expansion, Ratliff said the city codified ordinances number 951.01 needs to be addressed, as it requires a mandatory acceptance of annexation in exchange for water service. Although the ordinance hasn't been enforced in the past, some areas outside city limits being considered for water line expansion are remote and not viable for annexation. It was noted that the sewer line expansion to annexed areas would be considerably more expensive, and Ratliff suggested the codified ordinance 951.01 could be amended by tying mandatory annexation to both water and sewer service, not just water. The matter was tabled until law director draws up proposed amendments to the codified ordinance. Trucca adjourned the meeting at 4:43 PM.
Questions or comments regarding the Service Committee meeting? None? Okay, moving on. Thank you. Health and Safety Committee met in special session on Tuesday, March 13, 2018, at 5:00 PM. Mr. Myers?
Health and Safety, Tuesday, March 13, 2018, 5:00 PM. Members present, Mark McKeever, Bruce Trucca, Andrew Shaw, and Kevin Myers, Chair. Item one, the Special Health and Safety Committee meeting was called by committee members Mark McKeever, Bruce Trucca, Andrew Shaw, and Chair Kevin Myers to discuss ambulance service. The meeting was called to order by Myers at 5:00 PM. Item two, ambulance service. The city's current contract with the Central Joint Ambulance District expires on December 31st, and the group has given the city a deadline of April 6th to notify the CJAD of whether the city wishes to remain a member. Myers, who is the city's representative on the board, summarized a report he compiled on the advantages of both remaining with the district and leaving it, and the estimated costs of the latter should the city choose to staff its own ambulance service. He noted that while life support, the current provider, now operates without a subsidy, there's no guarantee that arrangement will continue. Myers' report contends that if the city were to staff its own ambulance service, three new firefighter paramedics would have to be hired at an annual cost of $270,000. Another option would be for the city to contract with an ambulance provider on its own. If the city were to fund its own ambulance service and offer it to the district with a subsidy, it would likely not be affordable to the townships. Following the CJAD's April 6 deadline, the district intends to go out to bid for ambulance service as soon as possible. If the CJAD deems a tax levy necessary to pay for a subsidy, it would have to be district-wide. Otter Joy Schiffer expressed concern about funding a city-run ambulance service if the collection rate is only 39 percent, as it was for the district in 2014 and in Gannion in 2017, although Mayor Jeffriesir claimed that rate is a misperception. The matter was continued, and another Special Health and Safety Committee was scheduled for 5:00 PM on Monday, March 19, to resume the discussion. Number three, Myers adjourned the Health and Safety Committee at 5:52 PM.
Any questions or comments regarding the minutes of that meeting? Okay, moving on. Health and Safety Committee met in special session on Monday, March 19, 2018, at 5:00 PM. Mr. Myers?
Monday, March 19, 2018, Special Health and Safety Committee, 5:01 PM. Members present, Mark McKeever, Bruce Trucca, Andrew Shaw, and Kevin Myers, Chair. Item one, the Special Health and Safety Committee meeting was called by committee members Mark McKeever, Bruce Trucca, Andrew Shaw, and Chair Kevin Myers to discuss ambulance service. The meeting was called to order by Myers at 5:00 PM. Number two, ambulance service. The city's contract with the Central Joint Ambulance District expires on December 31, and the group has given the city a deadline of April 6th to notify the district of whether the city wishes to remain a member. Mayor Jeffriesir presented a report to the committee outlining the administration's wishes. He advised against remaining in the district, arguing that the city has lost revenue by not operating its own ambulance service, and that the city is underrepresented in the district. He also voiced concern that the district could attempt to fund the ambulance service with a district-wide property tax in the future. Instead, Reesir recommended the city solicit bids from providers to serve the city that would allow the city to provide the second ambulance. Comparisons were made to the city of Gannion, which runs its own ambulance service, with staffing equivalent to that of Bussaras. Myers suggested the city would have to increase in staffing by one, in addition to buying an ambulance if the city contracted with its own provider. Several questions were asked about whether a subsidy would be required if the city went with its own provider, and what the size of that subsidy would be, and if the ambulance district will be faced with a subsidy when it goes to bid later this year, with or without the city on board. It was concluded that those questions can't be answered at this point. No decisions were made, and McKeever, Trucca, and Shaw asked the administration for more information about its proposal to entertain bids for a contract that would allow the city to run a second ambulance. The matter was continued until the Joint Regular Committee meeting on Thursday, March 22nd. Item three, Myers adjourned the Health and Safety Committee at 6:18 PM.
Any questions or comments regarding the minutes? Okay, moving on. Traffic Commission. Mayor Reesir, we don't have any minutes from the Traffic Commission.
We had a meeting today. We did approve minutes, but we don't have them ready. Love at the next meeting.
Okay, any questions for the mayor regarding traffic in the city? Mr. McKeever?
How has the intersection of bids and state taken a light tone?
Very positive results. We voted today, actually, in the meeting to suspend the 90-day rule and to go forward and make it permanent. So as soon, and we'll present that to council, we'll vote on it. And as soon as that's voted on, then we'll plan to have the arrows changed and everything remarked and the comments taken out. But lots of positives, lots of positives on the comments on it. Very few negative comments. Negative comments are just, you know, old guys my age, you know, they just don't like change, you know. A lot of my friends, even, so they like to give me a hard temper. But, you know, everything's good on it. We haven't heard anything substantially against it.
Any other questions for the mayor regarding traffic? Okay. I need a motion to accept the committee minutes of related committee reports collectively.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Trucca, to accept the minutes of related committee reports collectively, the one as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Report of city officers. Mayor Reesir?
Thank you, Madam President. Chief Kepke and I were by to speak at the Board, the Bussaras Ohio Restoration Annual Meet, a couple of weeks ago. A very good meal, a lot of great volunteers, and we're committed volunteers, have all the good chance to get to know Born and all they do for the community, and very important part of the social fabric here, and which basically part of that group. I've mentioned many times that organizations like Born, and Together We Hurt, Together We Heal, and many other church organizations that we have, Crofted Works, I won't forget to mention them, are so important in being the renewal and restoration of rural America. If the commitment to the volunteers there is any indication, we're going to be in good shape. One of our efforts from our office has been to reach out to the youth of the area about the concept of a healthy community and become a contributing member of such a healthy place. So with that in mind, I was privileged to speak at Bussaras High School, Crow Crawford High School, to their government classes, juniors and seniors, a few sophomores the last couple of weeks. I'm going to be speaking at Winfor next week. Very impressive, you know, hearing about young kids, and, you know, they're very selfish and focused on themselves, but I didn't see that. Everybody was well-behaved, lots of good questions, and great responses from the kids. I basically went there to challenge them, you know, to evolve, to be, you know, not to be the Facebook assassins and the Twitter, you know, critics, and, you know, if you see a problem, you know, get in there and, you know, solve it, and be part of the solution to problems, to be unified. And I did want to emphasize that unity is the key to the small-town Bussaras. You know, we've got to be as unified as possible. You know, we've got to be as unified as possible. I also mentioned, we have a lot of jobs available, you know, that are ready for them, you know, they don't have to leave the community, and they can come right into Ussires. And a lot of employers that are offering a career, you know, right now, you know, they can stay right here. Also, by them, if they want to go to college, great, come and return and raise their families. We offer a lot of things. We have to start selling, rural America has to start selling the importance of rural America. We've just watched a lot of our kids leave, and communities, larger communities, get bigger and bigger, and we flit our thumbs in a lot of ways. So we've got a lot of things we offer here, and the cities don't have as many rings as we can, in my opinion. So we have to make sure we have to reverse that trend. Well, I guess I'll end up with that. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the mayor this evening? Mr. McKiever?
Yes. How is the progress with the state garage? Have you gotten any information on that?
Yes, yeah. We've, we're working on the, we've got a plan, we're getting estimates of, we've got it all broken down by buildings, and what's going to happen, which buildings are getting torn down, or which are getting refurbished, and additional structure we may need, and the size of it. Right now, we're working on the estimate for that, and that will be the last piece of that, and we'll be able to present that to you as soon as we get that estimate, we should be pretty quick there.
Now, we're not entering into an agreement to purchase that, correct?
No, you will have to, it's not, it's a lease, so one dollar a year lease for 99 years, and that'll come back, you know, from you, and we'll present the plan, what it's going to cost, and how we plan to fund it, and you'll vote on it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
We think we'll have a good time.
Any other questions for the mayor? Okay, moving on. Service Directors' report.
I'm a service director hat on here, and I'd like you to know that the Board of Control will be awarding the 2018 material bids tomorrow, Wednesday, at 4:00 right here in Council Chambers. We'll also open the bids for the demolition of the old water plant, and the raw waterline construction cleaning on Tuesday, March 27th, 2018, at 10:00 AM, same location. And the Board of Control will open bids for the 2018 Millen pave project on Tuesday, April 10th, 2018, at 10:00 AM. So a lot of important bid openings coming up in those couple of weeks. And Mr. Wright, I would like to refer the 2019 salt bid to the Service Committee, and I know we have enough salt to get through tonight's score, but we're looking ahead to 2019, so, and we're hoping this is the last score.
Okay, any questions for the mayor regarding the Service Directors' report? I need a motion then to refer the 2019 salt bids to Service Committee. Second by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. Shock to refer the 2019 salt bid. The Service Committee, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you very much. Moving down, Law Director, Mr. Ratliff?
Thank you, Madam President. I repeat again, our new victim advocate, Mr. Sam Caldwell, former patrolman Sam Caldwell, is in the office, and working, and wants to be training this last week, learned a lot of stuff. And our property maintenance officer, Mr. Grove, is back in the building and out doing things, and I'll point out the mattresses and things that are right down the hallway from us tomorrow. And he'll be bringing in some of our new notices and things, where we're going to try to make sure we really publicize our public meetings, if they, with respect to the property maintenance credit this year. And one of the new things to those of you who are watching, we expect to have those things brought, or these tapes, so that people will be able to watch those property maintenance appeals and things, to make sure it's kind of where it's done on there. So I think that's about it. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for the Law Director tonight? None?
I kind of mope with that.
That one's going to pop up there, sure. Okay, moving on to the auditor, Mrs. Schiffer?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have a report this evening, but I do have referrals, and I have several of those. We need appropriation from unappropriated funds in Fund 101 General Security of Persons and Property, Police Department Materials and Supplies, and the amount of $2,000 for the police explorers' competition expenses. A check has been received from the Community Foundation for this expense. We also need another appropriation from unappropriated funds in Fund 101 General under Parks and Playgrounds Capital Outlay, and the amount of $4,800 for the purchase and planting of 40 sycamore trees within the city. A check from the Community Foundation in this amount has been received from the city's Street Tree Fund. This is a fund that was set up several years ago, that was actually contributed to by the contractors doing reconstruction on our streets, and it has been held at the Community Foundation, and we're going to put it to use to replace the trees around the city. Also, an appropriation is needed from unappropriated funds in Fund 285, the 2018 Crime Victims Assistance Grant, under Victim Advocate Personal Services, and the amount of $1,299.75. This is the carryover balance from 2017. And we also need an appropriation from unappropriated funds in Fund 286, the 2018 Victims of Crime Act Grant, Victim Advocate Personal Services, and the amount of $233.87. This is also the carryover balance from 17 in that fund.
Okay, any questions regarding appropriations? Okay, I need a motion then to approve these appropriations from unappropriated funds in the General Fund for Police Department Materials and Supplies, the amount of $2,000, and appropriation from unappropriated funds in 101 General for General Parks and Playgrounds Capital Outlay, in the amount of $4,800 for purchase of the sycamore trees. Both of these are monies that we've received from the Community Foundation, and a big thank you to them for handling that for us. And an appropriation needed from unappropriated funds in 285, the 2018 Crime Victims Assistance Grant, in the amount of $1,299.75, is a carryover balance from 2017. And an appropriation is needed from the unappropriated funds in 286, the 2018 Victims of Crime Act, for the amount of $233.87. This is also another carryover from 2017. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Foote, second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Sack. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you very much. We also have the auditor statement of cash position that was dated February the 28th, 2018. I need a motion to accept and file this.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McKiever.
Second.
Second by Mr. Foote to accept and file the auditor statement of cash position dated February the 28th, 2018. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Moving on, you have the Treasurer's Report for February of 2018. It will be held, and we will address it at the next committee meeting. We do not have anything from the police chief. The fire chief is supposed to be preparing his annual report, and hopefully at the next meeting, we'll have his annual report. I need a motion to accept the city officers' reports.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Foote, second by Mr. McKiever, to accept the city officers' reports. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion passed. This is where we allow visitors' input regarding reports of standing in or special committees and of city officers. Does anyone wish to address counsel this evening about any of these reports? No one? Okay. For consideration of proposed legislation for the first time?
We have six pieces of legislation. First one is ordinance number 5, 2018, amending and supplementing subsections 5, 22.02a2, entitled Noxious Weeds, Grasses and Other Types of Vegetation to Be Cut; 5, 22.02b, entitled Notice to Order to Cut; and 5, 22.02f, entitled Penalty. Before said subsections under section 5, 22.02, entitled Required Cutting Tax Lease, under chapter 5, 22, entitled Weeds, Grasses, and Other Vegetation, under Part 5, entitled General Offenses Code, of the codified ordinances of the city of Ussires, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. That goes back to the Health and Safety Committee. Ordinance number 6, 2018, amending and supplementing ordinance number 57, 2017, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2018, by the creation of a 705 Waterworks Replacement Fund sub-paragraph, containing a water distribution category containing a contractual services line item, and declaring an emergency. That goes back to finance. Ordinance number 7, 2018, amending and supplementing ordinance number 57, 2017, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2018, by appropriating from unappropriated Waterworks Funds, the sum of $2,500 to the material and supplies line item of the filtration category within the Waterworks sub-paragraph. Further appropriating from unappropriated Waterworks Replacement Funds, the sum of $100,000 to the contractual services line item within the water distribution category within the Waterworks Replacement sub-paragraph. And finally, appropriating from unappropriated Derelict Building Liability Funds, the sum of $17,010.50 to the other uses line item within the Fire Department category within the Derelict Building Liability sub-paragraph, and declaring an emergency. That goes back to finance also. Ordinance number 8, 2018, repealing and replacing ordinance number 56, 2017, establishing the compensation and human resource staffing sick leave and vacation of employees of various departments in the city of Ussires, Ohio, and enacting in its place legislation pertaining to the compensation and human resource staffing, sick leave, and vacation of employees of various departments in the city of Ussires, Ohio, effective to January 1, 2018, and declaring an emergency. That goes back to finance as well. Resolution number 215, 2018, authorizing and directing the Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the city of Ussires to enter into a five-year mutual and mutual aid fire agreement with Liberty Township, Ohio, declaring an emergency. That goes to Health and Safety. Resolution number 216, 2018, authorizing and directing the Law Director of the city of Ussires, Ohio, on behalf of the city of Ussires, to enter into a representation agreement with Crawford County Sewer District for the assignment of legal rights to act on behalf of the Crawford County Sewer District, and declaring an emergency. That goes back to the Service Committee, and you have the assignment agreement attached to that, and that is all the legislation.
And I need a motion to accept this as the first reading of legislation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Truca, second by Mr. McKiever, to accept this as the first reading for legislation. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Ordinance number 5-2018 is back to Health and Safety. Ordinance 6-2018 is to Finance. Ordinance 7-2018 is to Finance. Ordinance 8-2018 is to Finance. Resolution number 215-2018 is to Health and Safety Committee, and resolution 216-2018 is to Service Committee. This is the time where we have public participation. Any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the first time. Does anyone wish to address counsel this evening regarding legislation? None? Do we need a recess? Okay, committee reports on legislation. Health and Safety Committee?
Favorable to ordinance 5-2018, and favorable to resolution 215-2018.
Okay, the first one is for the weeds and grasses, and the second one is for the mutual aid fire agreement with Liberty Township. Finance Committee?
Finance is favorable to ordinance 6-2018, the new line item in 705 Waterworks Replacement. Finance is favorable to ordinance 7-2018 for various appropriations, and finance is favorable to ordinance 8-2018 for the lifeguards and employee manpower.
Thank you. Service Committee?
Service Committee is favorable to resolution 216-2018, is accepting the county water lines and accepting the county sewer district.
Okay, I need a motion to accept this report?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McKiever, and second by Mr. Myers. To accept the reports, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion passed. For further consideration of pending legislation, for the second and third reading of proposed ordinance number 5-2018, which are the weeds and grasses, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Second. Wireball?
Yes.
McKiever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Fireball?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Fireball?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Fireball?
Yes.
Ordinance number 5-2018 is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance number 6-2018, which is the new line item in the 705 Waterworks Replacement Fund, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Second. Foote?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
McKiever?
Yes.
Ordinance number 6, 2018.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 6-2018?
So moved. Second. Wireball?
Yes.
McKiever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Ordinance number 6-2018 is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance 7-2018, which is various appropriations, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Myers?
Yes.
Fireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Ordinance number 7, 2018.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 7-2018?
So moved. Second. McKiever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Fireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Fireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Fireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
ordinance number 7-2018 is duly adopted.
For the second and third readings of proposed ordinance number 8-2018, which are the lifeguards and the employee manpower, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Second. McKiever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Fireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Fireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Fireball?
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 Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Resolution number 215, 2018.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution 215-2018?
Yes. So moved. Second. McKiever?
Yes.
Myers? Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Foat?
Yes.
Schock?
Yes.
Resolution number 215 dash 2018 is duly adopted.
For the second and third reading of proposed Resolution 216 dash 2018, which is the County Water and Sewer District, uh, do I have, hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency?
So moved. Second.
Foat?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Resolution number 216, 2018.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 216 dash 2018?
So moved. Second.
Wireball?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Foat?
Yes.
Schock?
Yes.
Resolution 216 dash 2018 is duly adopted. Thank you very much. We'll move on at this time to old business. We have one referral that we need to do and neglected last time. When we change the manpower, we generally also have to change the billet and, uh, that's what we need to do, so I need to place this into the Finance Committee, uh, refer the billet for the changes that were made for out of the park.